Fourth is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone here. ED item that we voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. Mike Rosen is absent this evening and we'll begin with student testimonies. Houston, are there anybody signed up? Okay. Public comment. Ms. Houston, we have anybody signed up for?
I have one.
Okay.
Mike? I'm ejecting myself. I think we have to ask you another question. I just can't.
Welcome.
Tom, I have some paperwork here and I guess my question is, what do you guys normally do for practice on abuse, assault, and fighting at the public schools? What's the standard procedure after somebody gets caught doing that?
Take them to HR.
Yeah, talk to HR every week would be.
And we do not discuss personnel matters by name in this form.
Yeah. So, are you looking for us to connect you with HR? Roseanne would be the person?
If Roseanne does that, yes.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
Roseanne does what she says she's gonna do.
We'll go through here faster.
Thank you for coming up.
Ask him if he's gone through the complaint process.
No, it would be good moving it.
Personnel, he said personnel.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any other? Any other? Okay. I think I'd like to have, first of all, I want to say again, thank you to Youssef and all the senior staff for all the work that you have done these past month and beyond and that you will be doing. So, A, thank you. It's very much appreciated from the board. Second, would you like to give an update on the health and safety ongoings?
And I do too. Want to thank the board for their support during this time and I also want to thank our executive team. They have been really great stepping up and doing a lot more than they probably were hired to do.
Yeah.
So, they're stepping up, everybody's stepping up and putting their best effort to do to help the district. I have quite a better list of things that I will just try to keep it brief. We are in the process of borrowing about $5 million, which is the board authorized to help us do some work on the health and safety issues that we're dealing with. We also appointed an interim health and safety director, Dr. John Burnham. He's come in with great and deep experience in the health and safety in multiple universities. He's considered expert in the field and we're happy to have him onboard. He's already identified about 40 different programs that we need to look at. So, he's doing a really, really good work and I'm happy to have him onboard. We also appointed Courtney as the executive director of operation and Courtney also brings significant amount of experience and a deep knowledge.
Courtney?
Courtney Wilton, I'm sorry.
So, last name was what?
Wilton.
Wilton, thank you.
And he's been really, I mean, they're both hitting the ground running and I'm very pleased with what they have got to offer to the district. As far as the water testing, we have completed the tests and we got all the results and we made those publicly. We are going about, in the next week or so, probably put the final report, we're vetting the report with the company to make sure that we have all the data and checked. So, we will be producing a summary report of all the fixtures that were tested and we'll put that out to the public. Meanwhile, our CS2 have been working on the fixtures specifically on the kitchen to check and then give us recommendation about remediation plan so we can get the schools, specifically the food facilities, ready for the beginning of the school year. On that end, we're also working with contractor to come and change some of the faucet or the fixtures in the food preparation areas to make sure that's completed in time. And we also will, obviously, will continue to provide water to schools through the dispensers throughout the next school year regardless of the outcome of what happened with the testing and what we find. We have designed signage to put around our facilities to just make sure that kids don't drink the water from the sinks. These have been printed and we will start distributing them in the schools and put them in places to make sure kids see them and then they're clear. We're also in the process of hiring a contractor to go and shut down all the fountains so we can take the bags and just have, make sure there's permanent shutdown to the fountains. There's no access at all, which is consistent with the three Ts. As far as the lid paint, we have had quite a bit of projects that have started and I can, I'm gonna include that in my weekly update and how many number of schools that we have worked on. I didn't tally them, but there is probably 15, 20 schools that we have already started working on them between either completed or in the progress of working on them. And we have, we have a contractor that's coming onboard as well to continue the assessment of the paint. So, what we did in effect, we looked at schools, since our facilities are very old and there is probably lid paint in every school we have in the district. We looked at facilities that in, they're looking in really bad shape and we looked at the worst one and we kind of start going and fix it regardless. So, that's, these are the schools that we have started work on and as we progress throughout the summer, we'll continue this work. In term of lid plot screenings, we have, we have scheduled more sessions and I believe we scheduled the next three weeks, three weekends, and we're looking at potential schedule in days and evenings. So, we'll be working with the company to see if we can bring more slots during next week since we have had a lot of demand last weekend. I don't really have the numbers yet, but I'll also include it in my update, in my weekly update. And with that, that's what I have for now and I'll give you more details in the weekly report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Questions?
I'm curious, on the blood screenings, have there been some that perhaps have, were notified? People were registered for and then maybe canceled without notifying people? I'd seen some of that information from some parents or some.
Yeah.
So, how can we help that so that doesn't happen again?
So, you're speaking about last weekend. We have had quite a bit of numbers of people who came walk-ins and which kind of depleted the supplies of the contractor during the weekend. So, they had to reschedule all of them.
Okay.
For future sessions. And Joe, maybe you may want to add to this if there is anything else to add.
Joe Crowley, Director of Risk Management. Catalyst ran out of supplies and they could tell they weren't gonna make it through Sunday so they did send out an email to everyone who had registered online and they informed us that their staff made phone calls as well to address that issue and try to notify everyone that was scheduled for Sunday. And so, now we have three additional weekends here at this location, but it did inconvenience some people.
Yeah, I think, I guess some people were not notified somehow and I was under the impression that they weren't walk-ins, that they had actually had appointments. But, so, if we know to expect high volumes, will we be prepared for that these next two sessions?
We've had a lot of conversations with Catalyst.
Okay, great. Good, thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Steve?
Two things. One, I think we should try to schedule evening quickly because we're really, we're really down at the hand of that 60-day timeline. Now, not everybody believes it's 60 days, but everybody believes it's, at least 60 days you're okay and we're really over that number to some degree. So, we're going to do some more, but we should try and schedule evening quickly, in my opinion. And so, that gives people a chance to get in quicker and also some of the evenings because we did, I assume they're giving us some sort of a discount by, since they shut down. Then I have two other questions, three other questions about his report. When we go out and do the schools now, we've got some, so you probably, Ms. Reed, I'm sorry. We probably have some, we have some fountains that are fine. We gonna leave those open?
We're not gonna take chances with any of the fountains whether they're firing up.
Well, if they show up with no lead in them, no, they're not, and you keep those running, you're not really taking any chances. There are fountains without, they didn't even show up with any lead in that we could keep them. I don't see the point of turning off a drinking fountain that we've tested and it doesn't have any lead. Not gonna turn around in a week, probably.
Yeah. So, we don't want to confuse people. We don't want to have certain fountains open and certain closed.
Well, if we're turning off all the fountains and we turned off the ones that didn't have, that had the lead problems, we could still leave on the other fountains for kids to drink out of.
So, Steve, that's our initial testing and before we open any fountains, I would like to retest it at least one more time to make sure that it's working and there is no lead. So, I want to, I want to double check before we open any of our fountains. We don't want to take risks. So, next year is critical. We'll provide the water. We already did the contracts. At least make sure and double make sure that all the fountains are safe before we open them for business.
The, the second question out of three. The second one is that I think we need to send out a notice to all the parents about what we're doing surrounding the water before the school starts. I assume that you've already planned to do that. But also, I would think we would also include in there what they could do to help us. For instance, if their kids brought a water bottle to school, that's very helpful to us if the kid has water that they can drink and have during the day and so they don't end up having to. That would, to some degree, help us not have to turn over, it would help with the expenses and it's something that parents could do and kids could do to help.
So, we are actively looking for donations. In addition to that, as far as the communication plan, we have a meeting scheduled, I believe it's next week, to exactly develop a communication plan, what we can do with our teachers, where we gonna tell them to talk to the kids, what our staff gonna do, what messages we gonna send to the parents, whether it's in phone messages or in writing. There are other things we will do with our administrators. So, we're gonna have a comprehensive communication plan to address it from a different angles to make sure that kids are well-informed when they come to the school. So, we have that on, it's planned to be, to be completed.
All right.
And the third question, what had to do, thank you, thank you. You might, I don't know, you're doing health and safety, this one probably has to do with you too. Are we making some changes in how we're dealing, are we looking at how we're dealing with the safety, the maintenance safety, the types of things that are, for instance, that I talked about at some length about George Middle School where it took us two or pretty much to get out there and fix the hole with the rats in it or to get, to get the gang riding off to school, to take care of. Are we looking at where we failed in that, just, just that safety and it had anything to do with the lead in the water, it had nothing to do with the lead paint, which are broader things, but these smaller safety issues, are we, are we reorganizing around what we should, what we weren't doing and what we are doing, what we will be doing that are different?
Yes, Steve. The answer is yes. So, our first step was moving health and safety under risk management because all these issues are risks. The second step is what John Burnham, as I, as I mentioned earlier, he already identified about 40 different programs. This is not just water and lead. There is all sorts of risks associated with how we do business in the district and he'll be assisting all of that and that's what we addressing. So, we're also engaging our stakeholders in regular meaning to work on health and safety committees, updating the manual and do other measures to make sure we address all the safety issues.
Because there's immediate risk and there's lengthy risk. If the unreinforced masonry buildings that are going to fall down in a fairly decent little earthquake, maybe, that's a long range, that's gonna, we don't fix that tomorrow. But there are maintenance things that come up during the school year that we should be on, that we weren't on. We weren't on them and we should be on them quickly and have, be organized. So, we are on those and somehow they get prioritized in a way that's not just who's calling up, but what the risk is. And are we moving in that direction?
That's the assessment we're making as we speak.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's nice to know and it's nice that the public knows that.
Okay, thank.
Yes.
I want to go back to something Steve said about the communication plan really quick, about the lead water stuff. I was just gonna say, for high schoolers and stuff, the calling parents and writing to the parents and stuff isn't gonna be the most effective way to communicate. So, I'd just say, if you guys have like Facebook or something, like putting that type of stuff there, the high schoolers are probably gonna be a lot more proactive in doing those types of things than if you call their parents. You know, in the high, in the high school age, like, you know, call our parents, probably nothing happens.
We'll snap, we'll Snapchat.
Right. If you Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, that, you'll get the high schoolers a little bit more engaged.
That's very helpful feedback, thank you.
Yeah, maybe you can work with Courtney on that too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll be glad to help with that.
Okay, good. Good, good.
Put you on it.
All right. Roger, you want to come up and?
Come on down.
Come on down.
Our eighth board member.
Well.
Welcome.
We've been waiting for several months to come before you. So, I have a prepared statement. Board of Directors and CFO, Youssef Avon. I'm Roger Kirchner, Region Two Director of the Oregon PTA. Region Two is comprised of all PTA chapters within PPS. PTA has over 8,000 members within the district, hence it is your largest constituency, second only to the students. PTA's motto reads, "Every child, one voice." We advocate for all 48,000 students within the district, for all zones, and for all schools. Each May, in cooperation with the district, the Portland Council PTA honors volunteers who have contributed their time to benefit our students and the schools where they study. Volunteer hours are recorded by computer sign-in terminals in each school's main office. By early May, with several weeks yet to run in the school year, volunteers had contributed 240,000 hours, representing 52,000 entries on the tracking system. The 240,000 hours do not include hours contributed by yourself, yes, school boards are uncompensated volunteers, SACET, CBRC, D-BRAC, the Bond Accountability Committee, and DAGs. Indeed, this large number doesn't include the thousands of hours contributed at athletic events, music, drama, and dance performance events. Not included in the 240,000 are chaperone hours for field trips, dances, lit circles helping our young readers. And not included are the hours contributed by volunteers that work at the PTA Clothing Center that directly served 1,700-plus students this past year, providing clothing, shoes, and high glasses if they needed them. Combining all these PPS volunteer hours, the total hours for 2015, '16 climbs upward to, towards 300,000 hours. At a minimum wage, that comes to very nearly $3 million or equivalent to 30 full-time teaching positions. At May, at the May Volunteer Celebration, Superintendent Carol Smith presented Superintendent's Volunteer Awards to Amy Lewins of Hosford PTSA, Vice President, who was involved in leveraging district and community resources to help repair issues revolving around Hosford's auditorium, who also met with tradespeople to get assessments on the auditorium's needs and then wrote up a detailed proposal for grant funding for its repair. And she always advocates for Hosford's arts programs in the community and is always ready to volunteer for special events. Also receiving the Superintendent's Award was Larry McCarty, a Bridal Mile kindergarten volunteer. Larry has been volunteering in Teacher Anne Guzaw's class for the past 12 years. He is always ready to help with any task and needs in copying worksheets, cutting and pasting and data entry. Larry also reads to students and helps them with academic and social skills, a very important lesson in kindergarten my mother taught for 40 years. Larry's generous donations to Bridal Mile's library has also helped fund the purchase of new books for the school. Also receiving the Superintendent's Award was Cheryl Walsh, an Atkinson parent volunteer. A dedicated volunteer with Atkinson Running Club, Cheryl donated her time and talents, tracking student participation, encouraging them to meet milestones, keeping parents involved in the club, and she got local businesses to make donations so students could get prizes for meeting their goals. Beth Azar, Franklin parent volunteer, also received a Superintendent's Award. Beth is the school's parent communications director at Franklin, communications between parents and school through social media and newsletters. Beth also volunteers in the library at Franklin, writing grants, planning events, and assisting with library collection development. Before coming to Franklin, Beth was held, held key volunteer leadership positions at Sunnyside Environmental School for years. She is described as reliable, good-natured, and deeply committed to Franklin High School. Portland Council President Lisa Kinsel announced the Portland Council Awards. Portland Council PTA Local Unit Volunteer went to Michelle Arns. Every spring, all PTAs in Oregon have the opportunity to honor a member of their unit whose contribution to the community has been unmatched. At Portland Council PTA, we also had the chance to nominate an outstanding volunteer this spring. The Portland Council PTA Selected Local Unit Volunteer of the Year, also known affectionately as the Love Award, and we were happy to select Madison Section Vice President, Michelle Arns, to receive this award. Michelle also has worked tirelessly on behalf of all students in Portland this year as both Madison Section Vice President and PTA Appointed Member on D-BRAC. Portland Council presented the Principal of the Year Award to Robert Gray Middle School Principal, Beth Madison, who embodies the full criteria of qualities we are looking for in a Principal of the Year. Her community describes her as a passionate, dedicated, energetic principal who clearly loves her job. Students say that she is the best principal the school has ever had and not only has she given kids endless opportunities to get involved, she has chosen to teach students that learning is not boring and she makes it as exciting as possible. When staff members speak of her, they say, "Her leadership is cohesive, we feel supported and can set goals, take risks, and strive to improve while having fun when we give students our absolute and our best." So, in addition to the Principal of the Year, we select a Teacher of the Year. The 2016 Teacher of the Year is exactly the kind of teacher that every parent wants for their children. She is an inspiring teacher who works with families to see kids succeed and is highly committed to students and her entire community. Families at the school say that she supports volunteers in many ways, encouraging them to decide where they can best meet the needs of the classroom. Her colleagues feel fortunate to work alongside her and say she is a priceless member of the staff, working with parents and colleagues to make sure all students receive on, hands-on, real-to-life activities that connect with math, reading, and writing in a fun and engaging way. And so, Portland Council PTA awarded the Teacher of the Year to Andrea Smith of Bridger Portland Council wanted you to know all these things about the volunteers that were honored. But more than that, Portland Council invites each school each year to send eight representatives to this celebration. Like I say, it was held in early May. I wrote myself a note. Oh, even with eight from every school, you pack a ballroom. So, that's why it's limited to eight for, you know, these schools change from year to year who they like to invite. At your places tonight are volunteer certificates for each of you, along with a few utilitarian items that you might use. And for those who always criticize the board, let me assure you, there is no great financial value to what you've received, so you are not violating any ethics laws, I assure you. The, and PTA doesn't award or present gold watches, so that's just, that's why you get a certificate. Indeed, we have volunteers that have full notebooks full of certificates that they have picked up over the years. You will find the PTA is in congressional hearings, PPS board meetings, city council and county board meetings, and at the Oregon Legislature. We work for constructive change as well as maintenance of effort. We guard against unfunded mandates. There are far too many already. Education is ever-evolving. As Kitty Percy, who served 12 years as mayor of the city of Eugene, said on OPB just recently, "Problems confronting governing bodies," school boards, for example, "are iterative," meaning they, one problem after another. Kids might term it whack-a-mole. As directors, just like superintendents, principals, and teachers, you're expected to wear seven hats at any given time and you'll constantly be reminded, those aren't the right seven. Recent events acutely direct our attention to aging infrastructure, school buildings now averaging 76 years or older. The health and safety of our students must be ensured while we continue to modernize, seismically upgrade, and make ADA accessible all of our buildings. As PTA volunteers promoted the successful 2012 capital bond, it will again stand steadfast in its support of the necessary successive bonds that will be required to fully modernize all schools. Oregon PTA is also a proud sponsor of Measure 97 on November's ballot. Measure 97 is a corporate tax requiring the largest corporations to pay fair share for schools and services. Measure 97 asks the largest of the large corporations, the Walmarts, the Monsons, the Bank Americas, Comcast, for example, to pay 2.5% on Oregon sales above $25 million. 82% of the Measure 97 taxes will be paid by large out-of-state corporations. Revenue generated by Measure 97 will pay for education, healthcare, and senior services. Indeed, today Governor Brown endorsed the measure and it is expected to raise some $3 billion. $3 billion or more dollars per decade, or per biennium. As sponsors of Measure 97, we are also often asked by other education advocates that are promoting a measure addressing graduation rates. We feel the two measures can complement one another, but our support is directed to Measure 97 to garner the necessary funds that our schools have suffered from not having for the last two decades. In conclusion, on behalf of the Portland Council PTA, we want to thank you for your public service. We look forward to working with you in the 2016-17 school year and years ahead. As we work together in the education vineyard, we express the hope that we will work together as a team, while, as my dad said, "We reserve our right to be wiser tomorrow."
Thank you, Roger. Appreciate it. Appreciate everything you do.
And I would like to thank you for your public service, Roger.
Right.
And your incredible volunteer efforts on behalf of our students, and your very thoughtful participation in so many of the ongoing conversations of this district. It's really remarkable, and we're very grateful.
Yes, thank you. Absolutely.
All right. Our next item is the compensation audit follow-up. Yusuf, would you like to introduce this?
On July 20, 2015, the Board of Education passed a resolution calling for an audit of administrative compensation. The resolution included a freeze on any market adjustment. Since then, TKW conducted the audit, and the two phases of the audit, they presented them to the audit committee. The audit committee, in their last meeting, discussed the management's responses to Phase Two of the compensation audit. The Business and Operations Committee is scheduled to discuss the recommendation by the district and the philosophical approach that we're going to take with compensation. With today's resolution, we're proposing to authorize the Human Resources Department with the approval of the superintendent to approve certain adjustments in order to allow the district to continue doing its business. We're finding quite scenarios, quite number of scenarios where we can meet market and we're losing candidate for that. So, we proposed four different scenarios where we make exception to that freeze till we bring back the total package to the board. Thank you.
Okay, great. The, let's get this on the table here. The board will now consider Resolution 5317, follow-up to the audit on administrative compensation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anthony.
Second.
Seconded by Director Sparza Brown. Ms. Houston, any comment?
No.
Public comment? Okay, board discussion.
Mike Rosen wrote a letter to the board which said there were some things in the audit that weren't taken care of in this particular resolution. Could you kind of just outline what that is and maybe why we didn't do it?
Yeah, he pointed out certain things that we need to do, which we will do in our discussion with the Business and Operations in terms of the steps and certain policy procedures that we need to look at and discuss with the Business and Operations Committee in terms of the hiring and promotion, et cetera. So, all of that is going to be discussed with the Business and Operations Committee in our next meeting. That's what really the meeting is about. So, with this, this doesn't necessarily lift the whole freeze, it just lifted on certain options till we have that discussion, so we can't lift the whole freeze.
So, just to, yeah, to be clear on that point, Mike voted against it in the audit committee, felt that the process wasn't in place to get the compensation philosophy and framework adopted. This resolution puts that in place. Mike is not here, but would be voting for it.
Yeah, he's already voting for it.
Yeah, so.
And I do want to say something about that. I really want to say thank you to Mike. I mean, he has worked really well with us. We worked in collaboration effort, and we came up with this resolution, and I think it was very productive.
Yeah. Any other comments?
My comment is that it's too little, too late. Eleven months to do a compensation audit where we froze our staff salaries has crippled this district. We lost numerous employees to other districts. At an earlier meeting, I listed, I think, 15 of them, but I know there are more now. And in the future, I would hope that we would put something in place, if we're going to do something as drastic as freezing people's salaries and freezing our ability to hire, that we would figure out something better to do than a freeze, so that we don't continue to cripple ourselves with the number of people that have left and our inability to hire new people into those positions because we can't even begin to meet the salaries of surrounding districts. And I think that was the, not a surprise to me in the compensation audit, because it was told to us by staff that we have a compensation person who went through and did all of the work on making sure the compensation changes were bringing us to market. So, it wasn't a surprise to me that we, there were no smoking guns in this audit. So, again, based on all of that, I certainly hope that in the future, we're getting a little more thoughtful about the way that we move forward with this kind of work.
I'm glad to see, sorry, Tom. That we're finally having movement on this, because I did bring up a resolution in the audit committee several months ago, you know, looking down to see what would happen with our ability to retain our staff as well as hire new staff in those crucial positions. So, it did take, I-
Eleven months.
I'm disappointed as well, but I have to say that I'm glad we're finally here, and it's something that I had been trying to kind of acknowledge, that we needed to make movement several months ago.
Yeah, I just don't want to have people in the public think that there wasn't darn good reasons for taking a look at this, and that there wasn't, and saying, and I thought it was too slow, too. But there were darn good reasons that we took a look at this compensation and had a compensation audit, and it's brought about a more sensible approach and a more accountable approach for how we're going to compensate people. And I think that it's excellence they did, take a long time, but it was something that absolutely needed to be done, in my opinion.
Okay.
And in the meantime, we have many, many, many openings.
We have lots of vacancies, and I'm looking forward to actually talking about this in the Business and Operations. And because we're going to have, as a board, this topic is not closed to us, it's coming right back at us, and we get to decide whether we're going to lag the market, meet the market, or lead the market. And my own, my own personal philosophy is that we should lead the market if we want to be the best.
I think many of us share that.
We're going to have, as a board, a chance to talk about that. So, with that, the board will now vote on Resolution 5317. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5317 is approved by votes six to zero with Student Ripson and Bradley voting.
Yes.
Voting, yes, very good. All right. We now consider the remainder of the business agenda, with Resolution 5316 being withdrawn. 5316 is, it's in your packet, Cam. You want to holler at me and tell me what it is?
Employee dismissal.
It's the what?
Employee dismissal.
Yeah, okay, okay. Board members, are there any other items you'd like to pull before we vote? Ms. Houston, have been any other changes to the business agenda?
No other changes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Director Constance, seconded by Director Anthony to adopt the business agenda. Ms. Houston, any public?
We have one.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. So, I'm here this evening to really talk about the upcoming decision you're all about to make around hiring the next superintendent. And for many of you, that might be the biggest decision you've probably have made in your professional lives. And, you know, I want to start by really-
Do you want, just for the record, I'm sorry to state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joel Cisneros.
Okay, thank you.
And, so I think you have a big decision ahead of you, right? And so, I just want to start with really a quote from President Kennedy that states, "Leadership and learning are indispensable to each other." And I see all of you as the leaders of this district, and I want to invite you to take an opportunity to be learners. I think regardless of the opinion of the policies of your predecessors or former Superintendent Smith, there has been a lot of growth around the area of diversity in this district over the last 10 years. And at this point, the perception from our communities, it seems like that communities of color are being, are not being at the table as part of the decision process of the next superintendent. So, I'm just here this evening to just remind you that a third of the student population are students of color, and that it is a big constituency that puts you at that chair, and to not forget to include them and include the voice of those, of those students and those families. I think there has been a lot of progress, like I said. Moving forward, I really hope that you're able to bring different coalitions, such as the Coalition of Community of Colors, or other organizations that can support and inform the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I could just comment. So, as a member of the selection committee for the upcoming, the new superintendent, it is my intention certainly to reach out to my community and all the other communities of color, understanding that we are quite diverse, and that there are new skill sets. I mean, this is work that has been really important to the district. It's been integral to closing this gap, this equity work, and the way in which we're going to roll it out may look, you know, we might need to make some, some new goals for that, but that we need to continue that focus, and I will bring that to the table certainly in my role in looking for that new superintendent, and will outreach to all of you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
Nope.
That wasn't a no. Or was that a no? Oh, I heard the word no, so I just want to make sure I didn't. Any abstentions? All right. The business agenda is approved by six to zero with Student Representative Bradley.
Yes.
Voting yes, okay. We will now recess and continue the executive session that was being held before this meeting, and after we're done with that, we'll come back and adjourn the meeting. We're now in recess. I know. I know. Okay. I know. Okay.